I'd like to call to order the work session for the city of Flugerville at 6:00 P. M. We have four council members present. Others are here. They're just coming in late. But our first item, which I'm really excited about, is discuss and consider action to approve the appointment of the police chief. Serena?
Sure. Thank you. Following a national search, I'm proud to recommend Willie Richards to serve as our next Flugerville's police chief. Throughout a very rigorous process, including a public meet and greet, interview by a panel of community stakeholders, department interview, Willie shined as a leader who cares deeply about public service, building community and investing in our next generation of public safety leaders. Willie brings more than three decades of law enforcement. Most recently, he's served as the assistant police chief for the city of Round Rock and has served prior to that. He's worked in other agencies throughout his law enforcement career. His involvement was shown in innovative ways to do public and community programs, which we really liked, such as Step Into Success That Provided New Shoes For Kids In Need demonstrates his care for the entire community that he serves. His experience spans multiple areas of public police work, including patrol, training, recruiting, criminal investigations, criminal justice support services, and accreditation. He's a graduate of the FBI National Academy and has a master's degree from Sam Houston State University in criminal justice leadership. While he's not working, he spends quite a bit of time with his beautiful wife Nancy, their kids, their grandkids. They love to travel and spend a lot of times outdoors. I am requesting tonight approval of someone who I believe that is not only just a wealth of law enforcement knowledge and experience, but truly a wonderful human being that cares deeply for others. Willie, if you'll come forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel?
Good evening. So first of all, I want to commend staff on working so diligently with the community and bringing you out to meet with the community and receive feedback and get lots of responses with our stakeholder committee. I heard nothing but great things about about you. It feels like you've got the support of the community, the support of the staff, the support of the officers. So I'm very excited to see you here before us tonight and very excited to see you start for Flugerville. Thank you for being here.
Okay. Well, counsel, and I would also echo that feeling counsel-wise. And I know that picking a and selecting a police chief, especially for this city, as we're moving forward and growing, is going to be very critical, although we're fortunate to be close to Round Rock, so we kind of feel some of that growth as well over there. And so I know that you'll bring the experience that you have that I believe will change Flugerville moving forward, especially regarding publics, public safety. Counsel, do you have some questions on the dais if you choose to ask any questions or ask your own personal questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, sir. Kimberly Holiday, Mayor Pro Tem. While I recognize that Round Rock is just up the street, it is important for me to say that one of the very first questions for me was, was this a national search? And the answer to that was yes. And so we are excited to have you. And I want to say that I asked the community what they wanted, and your name continued to rise to the top. The city of Flugerville is regarded as a highly diverse community in central Texas. I'm proud to call it my home. Could you explain to us why diversity and inclusion is important to you and for our Flugerville police force?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The question of diversity and inclusion just brings us together to embrace the differences and the uniqueness that we all have to bring as to one whole. I think that in order for us to represent our community, we need to continue to be diverse and try and exemplify the community that we serve. And I shared this in a community stakeholder meeting. I go back to Sir Robert Peels, that the police are the community and the community are the police. And so without us being representative of the community we serve and inclusive of the community, we don't have any legitimate authority. So in an attempt to make sure that we strive towards that in everything we do and who we represent, that's why inclusion and diversity are so important to me in this business and how we serve the public.
Thank you, sir.
So I was happy to meet you previously when we had to meet the candidates. And I did ask you two of my three questions. So I do want to ask the third. What specific practices or leadership habits do you believe are most important to build and maintain trust, ethics, and transparency, both within the department and with the community?
Thank you for that question, Councilman Ryan. So I'll face that on three core principles that I try to live my life by and make it a focal point of operating in a position of humility, working in a position of integrity, and in serving. And so when I say that, I mean it is if we will carry ourselves with the humility that's required to enter a position or a situation or an event, not knowing everything and working from a position seeking to understand before we seek to be understood, we have that opportunity to hear other people's concerns and work together. And we act with integrity. So that's the simple act of behaving when no one is watching and doing what we're supposed to do and what's expected of us that more than likely I learned in kindergarten or not sooner, so that I live my life that way. And then the final part component of that is that we open up and we serve. And so we are in the business of service. And so working in a foundation of humility, integrity, and service, I think that we will then exemplify those ethics and those character traits internally. And once we do it internally, it will pour out into the community that we go out and serve every day.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So obviously, being a police chief is a very public position, right? You got to look good on TV. You've got to make a good presentation in front of community groups. And that's very, very important. I'm sure being around central Texas as long as you have been, you recall Chief Stanley at the Austin Police Department?
I did.
Chief Nee didn't really like being in front of the camera. And he assigned one of his assistant chiefs to do most of that work. And Chief Nee described himself as a workhorse, not a show horse. There have been other, and I'm not going to name any names here for obvious reasons, police chiefs in the area who have been show horses, not workhorses. And then there are some that you could, I think, say with some plausibility, struck a balance between those two. How do you strike that balance? What's your plan?
The answer is yes.
That is not a good answer. That is a show horse answer.
The answer is yes, but but a show horse is only as good as the work that they put in. And I have been committed to this profession and this region my entire life. And so when you ask me what my work is, my work is a community that I get the privilege and the honor to serve. And it's not a show horse. That's the genuine me that you get exemplified in how I carry out my work. So I believe my work speaks for itself. My concern and my care for my community is far greater than any show horsing I could ever do. And so those people that I get the privilege, and please hear me say it's an honor and a privilege to serve. Nothing's given. It's earned. And so I will earn that and continue to sustain that privilege of serving. That's the workhorse in me. And when you need that position to be filled, I won't ask someone to do that. I would not go and do.
All right. Let me drill down on that because caring is something I think everybody brings to their job. But you can care a lot about your job and not be able to do it effectively. You know, we've all seen that where somebody comes to the job with the best of intentions and they're just not up to it. So what are your top three priorities in doing the job, not caring about the job, but actually implementing things on the job to make sure that the citizens are safe?
Thank you for that. So top three priorities for me would be initial observation period of at least 90 days. I want to work through the organization, find out where we are structurally when it comes to response to resistance or aggression, what our policies look like and how we do business and how we treat people. I want to evaluate our evidence and our protocols for handling and storing and maintaining evidence to make sure that we have everything in line, that we're not missing the mark on some component of evidence, making sure the house inside is in order. And the final component is to work with the team inside because there's a great team inside the police department to develop strategies and develop plans that are one year, two, and then a five-year plan for the organization to identify the primary focus and how we then go out and serve the public in doing that and working those things together as a team and not as an individual.
All right. Let me let's follow up on the evidence question there because obviously we're aware of some very serious shortcomings, evidence down in the city of Austin over the last few years, some issues with testing at the FBI labs. What are you going to do with regards to making sure that evidence is properly preserved, cataloged, and presented in court?
So the first step would be I would ask for 100% audit. I want to make sure that as I come into the house and the operation that we have every piece of evidence accounted for. And if we're missing something or something's out of step, we need to identify it and identify what it is.
By audit, you mean a performance audit?
A performance audit, yes, a full, a full audit of evidence. And so in my lessons of learning from prior mentors, one of the primary components is to concern yourself with is the evidence procedures and what's going on. Because those things that tie into criminal proceedings that take people's liberty are utmost importance to me. So we'll do a full performance and evidence audit, identify any gaps or deficiencies, and put place, placeholders in, in the process to make sure that we correct them and prevent them in the future.
Mr. Ruiz?
I don't have any real questions. Actually, I come from a position of wanting to allow you to get the first 90 days before I ask some of these hard questions because I think you really need to come in here, get your hands dirty, and find out what needs to happen from that point. So again, I congratulate you for, for being here and being selected and I look forward to some great things. But I will ask some of these harder questions as we move along. But, you know, I need to give you time. You need to be able to come in and lead and take charge.
Thank you, Councilman.
I wanted to say that, not a question, but more of a statement. I look forward to building a relationship with you. It's going to be very important as we move forward. I'm glad you're here.
I have two more questions for you real quick. You alluded to it a little bit earlier, but let me ask, what do you see as your role is later on today? We'll be appointing a new associate judge reviewing our current judge. We're sitting in the courtroom. What do you see as your role in supporting the judicial process here in this courtroom?
Supporting judicial process in the courtroom, as I understand it, is the municipal court process for tickets and trials with whether it be some ordinance violation. So learning what that is and what's needed, whether there's court security in place already or not, I don't have any of those answers at this point in time. I would like to evaluate that and make sure that we're doing everything to protect the courts and the folks that are working in the courts as well.
And ensure that you're supporting the prosecutors and ensuring that the defendants have access to all that information as well. Yeah, very much to Councilmember Ruiz's point of maybe, maybe you need 90 days to get your feet under you. My other question, you know, the council here, we are the ones ultimately responsible for, you know, the safety and well-being of the city. Obviously, we put a great amount of trust in you. The integrity of the department is paramount. And so my, my question to you is what do you do and how are you going to ensure accountability and integrity throughout the department and ensure that we continue to be a great city and a safe city, but also an accountable city?
Thank you for that question. I think living out a life of integrity, which is character lived out into leadership, is part of the key component that I bring to the table. And what I like to offer is this, is that we will act with integrity internally and treat people with fairness and equitability. And then we will then transfer that out to how we do business. So it starts, I think, inside how we treat our employees, how we treat the people that come to this job every day and go out and serve the public and making sure that they're respected, treated properly, and then dealt with in a manner that is utmost with integrity. I'll live, I've lived my life that way. And so that, that we would progress through this as a team and building relationships. And once the relationships are established, then we know that that drives the integrity. So we keep each other accountable as we develop those relationships and work through this process together. And then coaching, mentoring, and training the team.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. This is an item for action as well. I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Willie Richards as our new police chief for the city of Flugerville.
Second.
And motion and second. This is a roll, call, vote. Mr. Rogers?
No.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor votes yes. Mayor Pro Tem Holiday?
Yes.
Mr. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much, and welcome to the city of Flugerville.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome aboard.
Appreciate you.
All right. Our next item is executive session and discuss and discussion of personnel matters pursuant to chapter 551 dot 074 of the Texas Government Code regarding performance evaluation of this municipal judge. We are in executive session. We are in executive session.
We are back from executive session, no action was taken. Having no further items on the agenda, I adjourned the work session, we'll be back in session in five minutes.
Um.